Twenty twenty four. This planning board meeting is being held in person and is available for viewing via the go-to-meeting format. If you have this, the agenda, you will have the link and login information. Members of the public with any interest in providing testimony better get down here fast because testimony on the agenda items should be done in person. That said, I'd like to call the meeting to order. It is six thirty-two. According to Mass General Law, anyone who intends to record the meeting must first notify the chair, who will then inform other attendees. Do I have anybody who wants to? I guess not. So I invite you to join me with our reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This evening, we have one public hearing and one public meeting. The first public, the public hearing is case number PB twenty twenty-four dash eighteen. James M. Coleman, manager DJMC Holdings LLC, doing business as VCA Pleasant Bay Animal Hospital through their agent Seth Dorman, WD Partners, seek a site plan review special permit in order to add two accessible parking spots, as well as to modify hardscape and landscape features. This application is pursuant to the Harwich zoning bylaw sections three twenty-two dash fifty-five. Properties located at nine Route one thirty-seven, MAP seventy-five, parcel G seven dash four, and the residential rural RR, and the Mass DEP Zone Two Drinking Water Protection zoning districts. Good evening, Mr. Dorman. Come on right up to the table if you'd like and look forward to your presentation. How are you doing this evening?
Good. How are you?
Good, thanks.
Great. Thank you, Chair Barry. Good evening, board members. I do have a presentation that I'll step through fairly quickly.
Terrific.
Okay. Again, thank you very much for your time this evening. VCA at the Pleasant Bay Animal Hospital is proposing an interior and exterior remodel of their existing facility. The interior remodel includes demolition of existing finishes and construction of a new layout on the main floor only. The existing lower level and the upper level, which is an apartment, will not be modified as part of the project. The reason we're here tonight are really for the exterior improvements, which include new concrete paving to update the accessible parking spaces and make them compliant with the current ADA standards, removing the existing handrail and replacing with the new ADA compliant railing at the existing ramp and stairs leading to the building. Remove and replace existing stairs leading to the building with uniform dimensions for all steps. Next slide.
Can you move on the right side?
Yes. Oh, okay. New concrete sidewalk along the front parking area, leading from the accessible ramp area to the public sidewalk and crosswalk at Route one thirty-seven and old Queen Anne Road. A new concrete sidewalk from the rear of the hospital building to a new exterior staff break area. A new brick paver area for that exterior staff break area on the rear of the building. A new brick paver area for the seat, for some seating in the pet relief area that's along the south side of the building, adjacent to the accessible ramp. They're looking to remove existing ornamental grasses in a landscape planter next to the accessible ramp and replace that with crush shell along the south side of the building, again, to improve visibility from inside the hospital building to the parking lot and accessible route areas. And then to remove and replace exterior light poles on the site to provide more consistent lighting levels for both customers and staff safety. Wanted to talk about each of the different areas. So ADA improvement to the accessible parking spaces. Concrete will be poured at the same level as the base for the crushed stone that is currently in the parking lot. Stormwater runoff from this minimal amount of concrete pavement in the parking lot will be directed into the existing pervious crushed stone in the parking lot. The remainder of the parking lot will remain crushed stone as it currently is. So the concrete is just for the ADA spaces. The sidewalk connection to the public sidewalk and crosswalk, the proposed sidewalk is to be five feet wide. Concrete would be poured at a two percent cross slope to drain the stormwater runoff to either side of the new sidewalk into the existing grassy area or the crushed stone parking lot surface on the other side. The additional stormwater runoff is negligible and can be absorbed into the grassy and pervious parking lot surface areas without requiring additional mitigation. What I've highlighted in this image is sidewalk connection from the rear of the building out to the proposed staff break area, brick paver patio. So the proposed sidewalk would also be five feet wide there. The concrete would be poured at, again, two percent cross slope for drainage. The brick paver patio would be graded to sheet flow stormwater runoff into the adjacent grassy area. The additional stormwater runoff is negligible and, again, can be absorbed into the grassy areas without requiring additional mitigation.
I try to put it over here first. All this, all this.
One slide, please. Thank you. The proposed seating area would be a brick paver patio ten by ten, a hundred square feet. It would be adjacent to the existing, to the existing accessible ramp. Brick paver patio would be graded to sheet flow stormwater runoff into the adjacent grassy area. The additional stormwater runoff is negligible and also can be absorbed into the grassy area without requiring additional mitigation. Thank you. You can kind of see in the picture that I provided that there are some ornamental grasses that have grown up. Next to the accessible route, those would be replaced with, again, crush shell. And again, that's to help improve visibility from inside the hospital to the parking lot and accessible route, accessible ramp. Remove and replace light fixtures and poles in the parking lot to provide more consistent sight lighting for the safety of the customers and hospital staff. So right now, there are three floodlights attached to wood posts that are right in the front parking area. Those would be replaced with a new parking lot fixture that's mounted at an overall height of twenty feet from grade. They'll be mounted to the top of steel poles. All three, like I said, the existing fixtures are located in the front parking area. The new light fixtures would be spread out a little bit. You'd have two in the front parking area, one in the drive aisle along the east side of the building, and then one toward the north access point that will provide some lighting in the rear. I think this is, oops, maybe that's not what I wanted to do. Do you mind?
Yeah, go ahead.
Is the bottom one the?
The laser pointer?
Laser pointer?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. My apologies.
Is this one?
Uh, that one there. Yeah. Okay. Anyway, the blue highlighted areas are where the four new light fixtures would be located. Next slide, please. So again, we're removing and replacing the existing fixtures. What you're seeing there is a photometric plan, should be in your package. The average proposed foot candle reading in the circled areas of the site is three point three-three. There is a minimum foot candle reading of one and a maximum of six point eight. You'll find the sixes at the entrance point, so it kind of lights up the entrances and exits to the site. The proposed fixture is this shown here as the LSI Marata Small Area. It is dark sky approved per the standards. Next slide. And that is all I have. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Excellent. Anything from the town you'd like to?
Sure.
Hold on.
Just, again, this is case PB two zero two-four dash eighteen. It's a site plan review permit modification, and the development type is really the exterior expansion to improve handicap and by improving some of the landscape and hardscapes to improve handicap and general access to the building. Reconfigure and pave two existing handicap parking spots, create two outdoor seating areas, one for patients and one for hospital staff, in addition to adding concrete, two areas of concrete sidewalks to the public road and along the pathway, and finally replacing the existing lighting with twenty-foot pole, poles. There'll be four additional poles for the lighting. The lot area is forty thousand five hundred and eleven square feet. The location of the project is nine Route one thirty-seven. MAP and parcel ID is seventy-five G seven dash four. And again, in terms of the applicable laws, Mass General Law, Chapter forty-eight, Sections nine and eleven, and the Harwich zoning bylaw Sections three twenty-five fifty-one special permit and three twenty-five fifty-five site plan review special permit. And so I already did the property location. So the project review process, the application materials for the site plan review were submitted on July eighth, twenty twenty-four. The applicant seeks site plan review special permit modification to reconfigure, again, to reconfigure the parking lot, improve handicap access, expand the exterior of the building to improve access to the building, and create two outdoor areas, again, for patients and hospital staff, in addition to improved lighting. The public hearing notice was advertised in the Cape Cod Chronicle, July eighteenth and July twenty-fifth. A duly advertised public hearing is taking place this evening on August sixth, twenty twenty-four. The package, the application package was sent to various town departments for health, water, fire, conservation, public works, zoning and building department, and the police departments. There were no comments of concern, however, the Board of Health Director did ask, in terms of the staff paving, if that would be, if that would be covering the septic, the current septic system. And if it is, it might be something to consider possibly moving pavers so that you, you're not interfering, should you, should the hospital need to access its septic system. So for project history, in January nineteen seventy-four, the zoning board appeals granted a special use permit to construct a veterinary hospital in the RR zone, rural residential zone. In February nineteen eighty-six, the ZBA granted a use variance, variance to allow commercial business sign, also in the residential zone. And in nineteen ninety-four, the planning board granted a site plan review special permit for three thousand three hundred square foot addition to the hospital, including a two-bedroom residential apartment with approved twenty-two parking spaces. The project is a modification to a site plan review case PB nine four dash three. The use of the animal hospital was approved by the zoning board of appeals, special permits, ZBA nineteen seventy-four, and ZBA nineteen eighty-six dash eight. And the application and the hearing documents included form a narrative, as well as planning board site plan review modification application. There was an owner authorization letter from Dr. James Coleman, manager DJMC LLC. The proposed site plan did include an engineering plan, as well as a lighting plan and electrical plan from Derek M. Heckler, civil engineer. And the stormwater management report, I did not feel that the modification triggered any stormwater management. I, in talking with the applicant, we had come up with some mitigation options to provide appropriate drainage for the increased impervious areas for both the handicap parking spots, as well as the sidewalk, the concrete sidewalk, in addition to the two brick paver seating And so just for a general site plan review, the current use of the animal hospital is not allowed by the residential rural zoning. The ZBA did grant a use variance in nineteen seventy-four. The building placement, there will be no expansion of the existing footprint of the building. There will be no exterior expansion of, there will be exterior expansion of the steps, railings, and ramp, and in addition to landscape and hardscapes within the site. The road and access and egress will not be changed in any way. The parking layout, there are currently actually twenty-three parking spots on the plan, and the handicap access parking will be modified with, with concrete, and the overall handicap access to and from the building will be a general and overall improvement in the building for all members of the public as well. There was no, at the time, there was no condition of a dumpster, so there is no dumpster on site currently. And the stormwater management and drainage, again, even though the project is located in a Mass DEP Zone Two Drinking Water Protection District, the site didn't trigger stormwater permit. And the previous, the previous site plan did address drainage and stormwater management issues. The modification changes did not, again, did not require stormwater management plan, and the existing parking will remain as a pervious surface. So, so moving on, a traffic study was not recommended for the site plan modification, and the septic system is Board of Health compliant. With some of the renovations, it might be noted that, you know, depending, if there's an increase in use for the hospital, that they, that may trigger some improved septic system modifications, just to highlight from the Board of Health perspective. And again, there will be some minor changes for landscaping plan and screening, and the only differences will be the addition of the two outdoor seating areas for both via brick paver that will be added. There isn't, for signage, there isn't existing signage. If there's any changes to that, that will be, that will need to be compliant with the Harwich Code Sections three twenty-five, twenty-three, and twenty-eight. And for the lighting plan, the applicant proposed to remove and replace current lighting poles and fixtures with new LED and dark sky compliant, compliance, compliant as required by Harwich, by the Harwich Code. So, Mr. Chair, if there are any questions of myself, please let me know.
That's excellent. Very comprehensive. Thank you. Any questions from the board to the applicant? Alan, nothing? I just, Harry?
I'm trying to, I'm thinking about the, that lot. Doesn't, isn't the grade of Queen Anne Road higher than the parking area? And also one thirty-seven higher than the parking area? So how is the, the, the adjacent, how is the adjacent grassy area going to be adequate for drainage if both of the, it's kind of, the building's kind of in a bowl. I mean, it's flat on church, like, just about flat on, although church may be a little higher. Then you've got, then you've got Queen Anne, and you've got one thirty-seven. It seems to me that there is nowhere downhill for more water, more rainwater to go. It could only be, have to go uphill, which obviously can't do. So is that, am I picturing this wrong?
I mean, I think it's a good point. I think, you know, the thing to consider is that we do have almost an acre there. You know, we're handling the runoff today. What we're adding is negligible an area from a perspective of site engineering, and we believe that the lot itself, which, again, is almost an acre. And the doctor also owns the lot, the north, where the back parking area is. We believe that the impervious surface being added is fairly negligible and should not be an issue with stormwater drainage.
Thanks. The topographical thing to consider is that, if I'm wrong, only because I've been there several times with that for the last couple of decades, is that my recollection is that the land slopes kind of gradually and precipitously to the south. So once you go across one thirty-seven, it kind of goes down. That's where the deeper holes, I think. But, you know, that's, that's just me. I don't know. I was very happy to see the dark sky compliant lighting. My only question that I would have is that I was not, didn't really see visually on the plans, and perhaps you could just walk me through a couple of seconds here, was with the handicap spots. I'm assuming that they're going to be clustered by the ramp, kind of a thing, or is that the idea?
Yeah. Did I see the board?
Yep. Although, don't ask me to read anything.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty busy with some of the labels, but the two handicap parking spaces will be right by the accessible route, and we're making improvements to that route into the building, but the spaces will be right here.
Okay.
So close this two of them.
Right. Okay. Any other questions? That being the case, I entertain a motion to close the hearing.
I make a motion to close the hearing.
Have a second? We're doing roll call voting, so all in favor of closing the hearing, please signify when I call out your name. Emily Brudy?
Emily Brudy, aye.
Ann Clark?
Ann Clark, aye.
Harry Munz?
Harry Munz, aye.
Alan Peterson?
Alan Peterson, aye.
Duncan Berry, aye. Motion carries unanimously. The public hearing is closed. Are there any further questions before we go ahead? Because I think we've got the language. Thank you very much. The motions, pretty much laid out here at the end. So we have some conditions for approval that can probably get wrapped up into a site plan review special permit approval, correct? So.
It's a modification.
Oh, excuse me. Site plan review special permit modification. Correct the window. Thank you. Apologies. Want us to tackle the, Alan, you want to tackle the motion tonight, or is it too remote?
Yeah, it's kind of, it's kind of too remote.
Okay. See if I can recruit some local talent. Anybody wish to give her a go?
I'm getting, I'm getting.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Okay. So I make a motion, we have to make a motion for a site plan special review modification?
Findings of fact.
Findings, with the first, with the findings of fact.
Right.
Have we made the first motion?
No, we're not. And the findings of fact, I think, are at the bottom of page five of the staff report, starting with?
Yep, got it.
Recommended findings of fact.
Clarification, do we need to make a motion first or not?
You will be making the motion.
All right, I make a motion that?
Yes.
We accept the following findings of fact. One, the applicant agent is Seth Dorman, WD Partners, on behalf of James M. Coleman, manager DLMC LLC, twelve Dillon State Drive, Dennis, Mass, oh-two-six-three-eight. Two, the subject property is nine Route one thirty-seven, MAP seventy-five, parcel G seven dash four, in the residential rural estate zoning district and Mass DEP zoning to drinking water protection zoning district. Three, the proposed modifications is to expand the exterior of the building to improve handicap access, pave two handicap parking spaces, as well as to improve minor hardscape, landscape, and lighting features. Four, the current use of the property is an animal veterinary hospital. Five, even though the use is not allowed by zoning, the site has operated as an animal veterinary hospital since nineteen seventy-four, as permitted by the Harwich zoning board of appeals. In the nineteen eighties and nineteen nineties, there were changes and a significant addition to the hospital. The proposed modification will improve the ADA access and improve lighting and two outdoor seating areas for staff and patients. Six, the modifications are an overall improvement for access to handicap persons, as well as the general public. The lighting and seating areas are an improvement for staff and patients. The sidewalks are also an improvement. Seven, the applicant has addressed the drainage and stormwater for the minor addition of pervious surfaces as shown on the site plan. Eight, the modifications are appropriate for the animal veterinary hospital, even though the hospital is located in a residentially zoned area. Nine, the applicant's agent has applied to the planning board for a modification of a site plan review special permit granted in nineteen ninety-four. Ten, the application for a site plan review special permit modification was filed on July ninth, twenty twenty-four. Eleven, subject to the conditions of approval stated herein, the application and site plan, as modified, conform to Sections three twenty-five dash fifty-five and three twenty-five dash fifty-one of the Harwich Code. Twelve, the planning board held a public hearing on August sixth, twenty twenty-four.
Have a motion, may I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, vote. Please signify in the affirmative or negative. Emily Brudy?
Emily Brudy, aye.
Ann Clark?
Ann Clark, aye.
Harry Munz?
Harry Munz, aye.
Alan Peterson?
Alan Peterson, aye.
Duncan Berry, aye. So I'd like to entertain a motion now for approval.
Do we have to do the conditions?
We have to do the, yes, recommend the conditions.
So we have to have a motion to?
Motion to accept the, a site plan review special permit modification with the following conditions of approval.
Okay. Following conditions of approval are, one, the proposed modification shall be in accordance with the site plan referenced in the application materials listed above. Two, the modifications are an overall improvement for access for handicap persons, as well as the general public. The modifications are appropriate for the animal veterinary hospital, even though the hospital is located in a residentially zoned area. Three, the modifications are an overall improvement for access to handicap persons, as well as the general public. The lighting and seating areas are an improvement for staff and patients. The sidewalks are also an improvement. Four, the applicant has addressed the drainage and stormwater for the minor addition of pervious services as shown in the site plan. Five, this decision shall run with the property. Conditions of approval shall be binding on future owners. Six, all previous decisions shall be?
Considered included in the above?
Yes. Will be considered included in the above. Seven, this special permit shall not take effect until a copy of the decision, bearing the certification of the town clerk. The twenty days have elapsed after the filing of the decision, neither that no appeal has been filed, or that an appeal has been filed within such time period, is recorded in the registry of deeds and indexed under the name of the property, owner of record, and the parcel address. Eight, this special permit shall lapse within two years, which shall not include such time required to pursue or await the determination of an appeal referred to as GLC forty-eight Section seventeen from the grant thereof, if a substantial use thereof has not sooner commenced except for good cause, or in the case of permit for construction, if construction is not begun by date except for good cause. Nine, changes to the site not authorized under this decision will require further planning board review and modification to this decision. Ten, the applicant shall conform to the inspection, certification, and as-built plan requirements outlined pursuant to the code of the town of Harwich. Eleven, further any provisions of the site plan review special permit, case PB ninety-four three, not modified herein, remain in full effect, including the two zoning board of appeals decision, ZBA nineteen seventy-four decision, and ZBA nineteen eighty-six decision.
Have a motion on the floor. May I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, vote. All in favor, please signify with affirmative. Emily Brudy?
Emily Brudy, aye.
Ann Clark? Harry Muntz?
Harry Muntz, aye.
Alan Peterson?
Alan Peterson, aye.
Duncan Berry, aye. It's unanimous. Before we let you go, I'd like to thank you for an excellent presentation. I'd also like to thank the town for outstanding coverage, including the historical material from the seventies and the nineties. This makes it so much easier and effective for this board to move ahead. Thank you both for both sides of the equation from your citizens. So, really excellent work. Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Thank you all.
Yep, thank you. Uh, we move on this evening to our public meeting portion. Susan is here with us now online. It starts with, it's case number twenty twenty-four dash nineteen, Eastward M B T LLC, trustees of Eastward Homes Business Trust. Agent Susan Ledoux has requested a release of government covenant, oh my goodness, for fourteen, number fourteen, lot seven, Levi's Lane, assessor's map one zero six, parcel H seven, and the residential rural R dash R R, and drinking water resource protection, D W R P zones. The original case was P B twenty nineteen dash forty-three. Susan, good evening. Thank you for joining us.
Good evening, Susan. Hi, how are you? Susan Ledoux from Eastward Companies, and I, I think the description basically covers my presentation. We've submitted the plant, the planning board application requesting the covenant release, the filing paycheck, and the road construction estimate. And I'll just go to that quickly or down below in my letter to the board. We have completed all the road construction work at this ten-lot subdivision. The remaining work would be sidewalk installation, and I don't know, as members, some members know, we like to install the sidewalk as we develop each lot where the sidewalk is located on that side of the road. So, we do have some remaining sidewalk to install. As-built plans would be prepared following the sidewalk installation of the completion of all the work, and then street cleanup. And we've estimated that remaining work on our road construction estimate that follows as twenty-six thousand dollars, and we'd be glad to post security for the release of lot seven.
Very good. Anything from the town on this?
No, I did not have V H P do an evaluation because they had done one earlier confirming a lot of the work.
Right.
And, um, so I would recommend to, um, proceed with the full release of the covenant with the condition that their, the twenty-six thousand dollars is covered with a security exchange.
We good with that, Susan?
Yep, we're fine with that. Yes.
Well, I would like to entertain a motion there that we, uh, release, we, um, issue a release of covenant for number fourteen, lot seven. Do you have a motion?
A motion?
To release?
To release covenant, uh, lot number fourteen?
Lot number four, uh, number fourteen, lot seven?
Lot seven.
Levi's Lane, assessor's map one zero six, parcel H seven.
Residential rural drinking water resource protection, W R P zones. The original case is P B twenty nineteen dash three.
Correct. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion. Uh, we'll vote, uh, again, uh, Emily?
Emily Brody, aye.
Ann?
Ann, aye.
Harry?
Harry Muntz, aye.
Alan?
Alan Peterson, aye.
Duncan Berry, aye. Very good. Uh, motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, Susan. Make checks payable to Duncan Berry. Thank you so much.
Okay.
All we have left now for business this evening is the approval of our minutes from, uh, July ninth.
Mr. Chair, apologies. I don't have the meet and draft minutes.
Okay. I was gonna say...
Some minor changes I needed to add, so, and, um, we will have them prepared for the next meeting.
Okay, good. So, that also means that we have the comprehensive town planning update?
So, yes, last week, I want to thank several of the board members who attended the housing production plan stakeholder meeting that was hosted by the select board. I thought the presentation and the opportunity to talk with local and regional experts, but also decision makers, both from the planning board, the zoning board of appeals, the select board, as well as the representatives of the trust and the housing authority and the housing committee, in addition to some other local and regional professionals, I thought there was a really nice mix of attendees and...
Great turnout.
Yes, we had a really nice turnout. Um, some of the discussion didn't get into as much of the detail, but I did feel, you know, at least, um, having that opportunity to have some discussions, I thought it went well. But Emily and Duncan, you both were in attendance, so if you have other, if you, if you have any additional thoughts on that, please.
I shared my opinions offline, only because that I didn't think there was a, a point of deliberation yet until we've looked at the document, and I think we would all be well-served by having a link distributed to the, I guess, the work in progress, which is a much more comprehensive material than what we had. I thought we had a great turnout, but I thought it was kind of a thin presentation, but, you know, I think there's probably more to it that we didn't get into. It would have been, I would have preferred a little more, you know.
Well, there is, and I'm, I
It's there, but I didn't...
Definitely share it with everyone, just to make sure that you're, you're up to speed on where we are, because in terms, prior to this being submitted to the state, the planning board does need to vote and endorse the plan, so it's, I want to make every effort that that's made available to the board members, and in addition to the three other plans that are happening, I want to make, also make sure I'm providing as mu, as many updates as possible to this board, because the planning board will not only be very much involved in some of the adoption and endorsement of these plans, but also once these plans have been finalized and approved, a lot of the work will come from the planning board, select board, zoning board of appeals, and so for implementation purposes, um, a lot of the heavy lifting will, um,
It's coming, yeah.
rely on us, so, um, so if you have any questions, please don't, please feel free to reach out and but make sure that I'm also being responsive and providing that information to you, to you all in a timely manner as well.
I think it would be, um, good kind of practice for us to probably make sure that we receive the, the document as it's being developed and look at it. I mean, give it a critical eye, because we're gonna have to live with this thing.
Yeah.
And we, we actually, for, you know, for, to receive state funds, we need to have it in place. I mean, we need this. And, but that doesn't mean we just simply rubber stamp something that's not gonna work for us. My, my primary concern was, there was a lot of boilerplate in the presentation, and I didn't think it was kind of granular enough to uniquely Harwich concerns. And so, like, I didn't think it got very specific. You know, so that's, that was my condition, my concern. I don't know how many other people may have felt that way, but I think because we're the place where a lot of this, the rubber meets the road, we ought to know exactly what's going on. So, that, that's number one. Number two is, I think, um, so we need to digest the material. And then we also probably ought to have a good feedback loop session again with Joyce, whether it's Joyce alone, or maybe we get our, our groups, their committee and our board. And is that a possibility, just to have a kind of a round table, so we can maybe have a checklist, if you've got concerns and I've got, we could just kind of hash it out. I think that would be hygienically very solid way of, like, pulling stuff out and getting these, these issues, because they're facing the public, but they're not taking a lot of input from us. Right? So, I think we ought to be part of that process for our own sake, you know, for the future of this board, whoever serves on it.
Well, for two, um, yes, absolutely. I will send out the housing production plan as it is and get that, the most recent update to all of you. And secondly, I can ask Joyce to have a joint meeting with the planning board. And, um, thirdly, I, I, this fall, um, the local company, the local planning committee is looking to meet with all of the town boards to provide updates with, regarding the local comprehensive plan, and just to make sure that, that all of the recommendations, the strategies, and the goals are in line with each of the town boards and committees' own vision and direction, directives.
Right.
The, in, the only other issue that I'll, not issue, but the only other piece that I'll ask for the housing production plan, if it's possible to have a meeting, to have a community engagement meeting where the planning board can hold a public hearing and adopt the housing production plan sometime in, um, either late August or September, if that's possible.
We have to adopt it?
Eventually, we're gonna have to adopt it.
Right, so if you're...
To endorse it, to submit it to the state.
Right, so if you can educate us and we can get that specificity done, make it Harwichized or whatever, um, before that, I'd be in support. So, it's like, yes, we need to approve it, but I, like Duncan would...
Absolutely. So, I, actually, I misspoke. I'm thinking the end of September.
Okay, good, sorry.
That's fine, because otherwise it's a little...
We're right there.
I'm sorry, I, um, the, either the end of September or early October, if we can do that, and that would be...
But their whole local comprehensive plan is still something that's slated for submission in twenty twenty-five, right?
Correct.
Okay, so...
So, they're looking to have a final draft by the end of December, in, in the hopes that it will, that the plan will be adopted at annual town meeting. But again, the, the local, um, comprehensive plan will also need the endorsement of the planning board and the select board before it goes to town, annual town meeting. That's, that's, that's what we're looking to do.
Now, this also brings up one other issue, and again, this is kind of like, I don't know if this is just me, I don't know if you felt this way, or if you had the, say, any other response, but my, um, another response that I had to the housing production plan was, um, I would have appreciated kind of a synopsis of the strengths and weaknesses of the language of our zoning that provides in itself obstacles to enhanced housing production. So, we have definitions and, you know, um, formulas that are probably, haven't been thought about seriously as things that could be removed. So, like, we could do some, like, Jenga-izing, like, remove things that would probably streamline the process. And this is kind of one of the things that I'm seeing in some of the other boards in town, is that, you know, when faced with a housing issue, well, it's like, well, we don't deal with housing. We deal with water, or we deal with planning, or we deal with zones. Like, this is all part of, we have to, like, come together, because this business of the, um, the S H I index, you know, um, we, we need to pull it together and make this work. So, I, I'm wondering whether or not, and I, this is not urgent, this is not, you know, I don't want to put anything else on you, because you've got a full plate, but one of the things we discussed very early on was, it would be interesting, I think, not interesting, again, it would be, I think, a good use of time for this board to go through the language of our, um, you know, our zoning code here afresh. We haven't done, I've been on this board for half a decade. We haven't, like, spent time as a board examining what it is that we, we add things, but we never think about what can be subtracted, so. How's it going?
Sorry.
No problem. We're having a discussion at the end of the meeting now, and I feel bad, because I feel like I'm taking another ten minutes out of everybody's life. But, um, thank you for coming.
Sorry.
No apologies needed. We had a very good meeting here, but we're, the end of the meeting, we're discussing the housing production plan, um, plan that was presented last week, and, um, some of the other materials related to that, so, and some of our duties before town meeting, so, but...
I would love to see us take a look at the overlay plan, at the overlay district.
Well, my thought was, the, the basic thing was that the housing production plan, we weren't looking, it was adding more things, oh, we can do this, let's do this. Well, we haven't thought about what we can remove, obstacles that are existing in the language definitionally, but things that may be anachronistic, element, language that's unclear. We talked about this five years ago before COVID, about, and when Jonathan was here, like, just combing through, you know, clearing the language, unifying, and so my thought is, at some point, I think this board would be, do a very good civic duty by all of us sitting down and kind of maybe parsing through this stuff, not as lawyers, but as just like, what have we seen before? I don't know if we, how we want to manage that, but maybe we could take a five-minute chunk or ten-minute chunk over the course of the year and say, then we have a checklist. Okay, so here are recommendations for the board of selection. You're laughing.
I'm not.
So naive. Is it so naive?
A little bit, because, and I don't mean that in a bad way, it's just, the reason the zoning bylaw is the way it is is because we made changes in parts.
Right.
And nobody took the, the overlook to make sure that it all, that all of the references were cleaned up.
Right.
At this point, to me, it's paying town council to have a good look at it, find the discrepancies, and have them work with Christine to, to get the discrepancies, one, out.
Right.
And then, two, see what you want to add. I don't think, I don't
Well, that's fine.
I don't think they're mutually exclusive, as far as, like, looking at a new overlay district to, as a part of what they're talking about, putting in the housing production plan, because really, that housing production plan is a five-year plan, right? That's, that's supposed to give us, um, kind of some insights when we look at, at applications.
Right.
So, like, the last time, we had motel, there were motel hotel conversions in there.
Right.
So, we didn't, while we didn't have any of those that turned into capital A affordable housing, we did have them as accessible housing for J ones. So, we had two of those. I don't, and that was the piece that I think we didn't get to at that, at that meeting, was kind of what was, what bigger picture stuff was staying, you know, what bigger picture stuff was coming out, but...
All I'm saying is, I think it's about time to do something like that.
I agree. It needs, it needs it, but I almost think it needs...
Fine, but I also think that the flip side is, maybe just for us...
We should still look at it, hundred percent.
Right. I'm just, we may not be the determiner, but I think we ought to be, we, we would be mu, much better on these face-to-face issues that we, from time to time, where there is ambiguity, and we know where in the, in the code our concerns lie. Right now, it's, we're very reliant on you, town and town. And I think we would all be better served if we kind of all brought our, you know, knowledge level up a couple of notches.
That's just, I mean, that's just because I've been here longer, that's nothing more than that.
But you're also trained in the whole thing, so...
No, but, but I think he was right when he said that we needed to do a, a full cleanup. It's, they get messy over time. Christine can tell you, they get messy over time, and, and because you're looking at doing a, you know, an A D U by law to add to it, you don't, you know, you don't always do the full walkthrough, and it, and it's, and you don't always have town council do a full walkthrough for you, so.
And usually, there's like, a, a, there's, from time to time, there's a political issue where it gets, like, it's a hot potato or some kind of concern, and you're not thinking about these things, or you're not seeing conflicts or overlaps or what have you. So, I just, you know, it's just a matter of, I think, you know, a lot of businesses do this, where they say, okay, if we're gonna, before we add anything into the budget, what can we remove before, you know? It's just a...
It just needs professional staff and professional legal counsel to kind of
Right.
clean up the, I don't think it's, there are a lot of little things. I don't think anything's, you know, ridiculous, but just needs to be done.
Right.
You know?
Okay, so, any other business before the board?
I, just continuing that conversation, I had mentioned to Mary and Duncan, um, just, for me, it's like, what's the action plan here? Like, I, I know, we didn't really get into it. It was great that everybody came together and we went through some of the high level, but it's like, how does this actually happen? I know within the documentation, there's, you know, some prioritization looking at, this will happen in the first one to two years, three to five years. For, for me, it's like digging into some of that, and like, to your point, like, how do you consolidate? How do you prioritize? How do you say, here's what we should look at first, and then how is that kind of, how does that happen? Is what I was, I was asking, like, you know, how do we make sure, how is it held, how are we held accountable? How we make sure that the roles and responsibilities are clear? There's some overlap in, in certain, you know, who's doing what? So, for me, like, part of the next step, I would love to dive into that a bit more.
Well, and to the... Well, and to that point is, I think one of the other things that we tend to do in moving zoning bylaw change, or language change along, is there's a certain kind of formula, there's a certain mentality, where development means X, Y, and Z, and we're now seeing, and I think it's really a sign of economic vitality, that smaller developers are, want to take on higher risk to produce, you know, results for the town. Not necessarily the, looking for a short-term return on investment, they're looking at, you know, bigger picture. And I, how do we encourage more of that? Like, the guy that's doing that, the schoolhouse thing, is like, that, I mean, the more I have heard and read about that, the more I think, imagine if we had half a dozen people like that in the mid-Cape area, you know, just looking for these little things that can be done, whether or not it's historic or not, it's just the, the risk tolerance for some of these things, if we can somehow mitigate that.
But it's so small and projects, which is why we were supportive of them to begin with, and may he get his one, right?
Right, so he gets one, and then the other thing is, like, so, and the other thing is, so he's going to do 10 units, three of them are going to be capital A affordable, but all 10 go on our SHI index.
Right. That's how all those projects work?
Right, but how do we get, you know, those little things, 10 at a time, those add up.
So, when she was talking about the housing production plan, one of, one of her last slides talked about community development block grants, and rehab, rehab loans and things like that. That's how you do that. You, you come up with a viable program, and it's not easy, where you have the money, what, maybe, maybe you get state money, maybe you have to use our own, and you do a rehab program to keep older houses on, or you, you come up with a, like I said at the meeting, you know, maybe there's a loan program that, depending on how the numbers work out, you'd have to see whether it's viable, maybe you can do a, you know, a loan program that helps smaller developers under X number of units, and give them, you know, 50% of their funding, still has to be paid back as a revolving loan fund, but, but you'd have to run the numbers and see if it works. Like, the question I would wanted to know from him is, if, if the town was able to give him 50% funding, would he have had a better chance at getting traditional financing? If the answer is yes, then, you know, then you, then you figure out how you do the payback. You do it, you know, hard, it funds hard construction costs, or it, you know, gets paid back, carry pursue, so that they're, you know, uneven payback at, at occupancy or something like that. So, those are the things.
That's what, that's exactly...
Right, but that's what, but that's what our housing coordinator and, and our professional staff are going to look at, and have to do over time to figure out. Like, that's what's behind those slides, like, when you're talking about a rehab loan program. In the nineties, there was a ton of small cities grant money that came through community development block grants, and they were typically soft-second loans that were done for lead remediation, or they were rehab, for rehab loans in a targeted area that was, you know, a blighted area in a, in a smaller city or a smaller community. And the cities and towns developed what they thought that, you know, the, the need was, and how that program was going to be run. In one community that I worked in, we did a soft-second loan program for, I don't remember if it was the loan or the deletting, or both, but the first iteration of that project was, if you kept the house for 10 years, then, then you didn't have to pay back the loan. The next iteration of that was, you know, you pay back the loan, but over time at a reduced rate, and it acted as a soft second. So, it gave people the extra money to do those, those things, and it, what keeps people in their houses, keeps the houses up to date and all those things. So, that's, I mean, the slide's nice, but it's the, it's the real work behind the slide that has to, that has to happen.
Right.
And that's what, you know, that's what staff will dig into, and will have to dig into, to figure it out, and what they want to do and what's going to work. But like, like, on a, a loan program, it's all going to be how the numbers work out for a developer, because, you know, you know, maybe you're paying them X amount for the, for the affordable restriction, and then maybe you can give them more money as a loan program, but it depends on what kind of money you have to work with, and what they need in order to get it accomplished, and, you know, is your target 10 and under, is your target five and, five and less? You know, is it for the...
Well, we have to run the numbers, and the other thing is, is that the ideal outcome would be, that kind of thing isn't a, an anomaly, it becomes more of a, to me, it would become more of an average thing, so that this, somebody, a developer like that comes before our board, or any of the other boards, and isn't seen as like a four-headed monster, like, asking for the sky. It's like, this should be, this is really a great thing, and, you know, just, it would be great to see more of that, I would think, so, it would help the town, that's all I think, so.
We need more, Christine.
There's a lot of possibilities, it's just, there's, you have to figure out where the funding is.
There is, there's a lot of, it's exciting.
Right, you have to know where the money's coming from and what the money can be used for.
Yeah, and it's got some great zoning that can be tweaked, and so, I do think there's a lot of opportunity to incentivize development, to work with developers, provided that there are some restrictions in place that, you know, provide, so that, to ensure that there's a community benefit.
Structured, right.
Yeah, exactly.
So, speaking of which, how's that, the certification of the zoning map coming along?
I am working with VHB to come up with scope of work, and so I will have a better update in the next, in the coming few, coming weeks.
Because all these, it's like, all little pieces that all fit together here, I think we're moving in a really solid direction, it's great.
Yes. If some of you aren't aware, the zoning map needs to be stamped in, and so, it hasn't been stamped in, so we are working with, we will be working with VHB to update the zoning map, and to make sure that it's on par with the references within the, within the zoning code, as well as previous past amendments that have been made at town meetings. So, we just want to make sure that we're just doing some housekeeping, and making sure that everything is up to date, so I will have a more expansive report on that shortly.
Great, thank you so much.
Yep.
Any further business? I'd entertain a motion to adjourn, then.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Second.
Roll call, vote. Emily Brody?
Emily Brody, aye.
Ann Clark?
Ann Clark, aye.
Harry Muns?
Harry Muns, aye.
Alan Peterson?
Alan Peterson, aye.
Mary Maslowski?
Mary Maslowski, aye.
Duncan Berry, aye. Motion carries unanimously.